Alrighty, so we'll go ahead and do roll call. Alright, I think we're set to do it.
All councilors present with Mayor Coleman and Counselor Grego previously requesting to be excused.
Thank you. Do we have any adjustments or amendments to our agenda? No? Okay, if I could get a motion?
Mayor Protam, I move that we approve the agenda as presented, excusing Mayor Coleman and Counselor Grego.
I'll second that.
Awesome. If we can go ahead and vote.
The motion carried unanimously.
Alrighty, so we'll move on to citizen comment. Do we have any citizen comment cards?
We do not.
Alright, well then we're moving right along here. So now we'll move to consent calendar A.
I make a motion that we approve consent calendar A?
Second.
Alright, I think we're ready to vote.
The motion carried unanimously.
Alrighty, so now we're next, we're into regular business and we're going to have a presentation from our outside agency, and so I'll welcome you to the podium.
Thank you, Mayor. This is Ashley Valdez with Excel Energy. You guys probably recognize this friendly face. We've met with her multiple times up at the Colorado Municipal League, and she's also in town quite a bit working with the communities here in the Valley. And so she's going to present tonight the work plan that followed the resolution we did almost a year ago.
Well, good evening. Thank you for having me again. For the record, I am Ashley Valdez, area manager for Southern Colorado for Excel Energy, and it's my pleasure to be with you all tonight. As Heather mentioned, I will be reviewing the work plan. For an overview, in April of 2018, Excel Energy entered into a memorandum of understanding with the city of Alamosa. And this is in partnership as we do collaboration. Alamosa was chosen as a pilot city for Excel Energy in my area to do a collaboration for our energy future. And so this memorandum of understanding provides a strategy and framework for cooperation and achievement on our shared vision for innovation, clean energy, economic development, customer choice programs, and technology. Now, since that time, we have been working with the city staff to develop a work plan. This is, we have the framework for the work plan, and there's a lot of details within the one that you all have before you. And I should just tell you, my presentation tonight is basically a very high-level overview. We will be coming back on a regular basis, you know, monthly to every two months and often if needed, as we flesh out some of the details on the specifics of the plan. So first of all, I'll go through the short-term goals with you. The first one is Project One, and that is sharing our knowledge base and baseline. One of the things that's important to us as a utility, a regulated utility, is to work in partnership with our cities. And utilities being regulated through the Colorado Public Utility Commission, how we do our rate structures and those type of things, it can be confusing. It's, you know, I've been in utilities for 23 years and I still scratch my head sometimes. So what we wanted to do was loop in your personnel to have a presentation with our regulatory group. We did that a few months ago via conference call. And we gave an overview of how we go about rate-making, what goes into that, what goes into, oops, what goes into our regulatory process and how we file cases with the PUC. Now, because this is a partnership, as opposed to us just, you know, providing for you all, we were happy to have your personnel come alongside and learn about that. We are looking in a partnership. Alamosa can provide us more information for how our regulatory processes affect the things that you all want to do here in the city of Alamosa, and gives us a chance to cooperate and work together to best work through those issues and perhaps mitigate any challenges that come along. So we think that's a great way to collaborate with you and then look at your priorities and objectives. So for example, that would be the downtown master plan. You know, how does our work affect that? How can we work collaboratively with you to make that as smooth as possible in that partnership? And then also, if you have code changes, those, you know, happen within a municipal as needed. So we're looking forward to working through those with you. Now, the great thing about this partnership with you all is we have other cities within the state of Colorado that are also being pilots in the areas of my counterparts. And so as they work through their partnerships, I think we're going to have a great opportunity to collaborate, not only with you, but for you to hear from other cities. They're, you know, going to have the opportunity to hear from you. And that kind of mind-sharing is a great way for us to expand our ideas and partner collaboratively throughout the state of Colorado and really set that pace for how that works. So I think that's pretty exciting. On Project Two is economic development. I know that that's important for the San Luis Valley. One of the things that we want to offer for you all as we work through economic development, we have a site certification process that we offer to our cities at no charge. So we'll be looking to bring our economic development experts in, and what they will do is look at the various sites so that we can say, well, this area over here is really set up nicely for, you know, be it someone that needs gas or do they need power. It also will help us learn more about any deficiencies that we have in the Valley. We know we have some in regards to capacity, and we're looking forward to more collaboratively discussing those with Alamosa and also the Valley as a whole. So this gives us a chance to highlight the areas that are good. We can look at the areas that need work and see how we can work collaboratively to improve those. And then the Project Three is to increase the city's energy efficiency. Of course, lowering energy consumption for the city, it reduces your costs. It also decreases air pollution, greenhouse gases. And we have a, the city has a desire to learn more about Excel Energy's energy efficiency programs, how that can work with the municipal buildings. And we have a great opportunity to explore and share, not only with the city, but also with the community as a whole, to look at energy efficiency through our Partners in Energy program. And that can be as narrow as you all would like it, if it's just a matter of looking at the city buildings and seeing how we can work more efficiently with those. Or we can broaden that out and bring in your community partners and some of those experts that have an interest in becoming more efficient, and develop a plan. And through that, you get to use our marketing to help you with those, you know, communication pieces, our expertise. I'm a generalist, I'm not an expert in everything. So what we do is we bring our experts to bear in whatever areas you want to look at and help you develop those to the fullest that will work for you. And then finally, Project Four is the Art Pilot Program. We are going to be exploring the opportunity of painting the switch cabinets. I know that is really important to you, to have a vibrant, fun city as people come through. We are going to, for 2019, be reaching for clarity to see what can be possible. Currently, I think, as you all know, we have live front switch cabinets, and that in of itself, to paint those, brings about risk. Excel Energy's number-one goal is for our community's safety, for our workers' safety. We want everyone to go home to their families at night, so we have to be very aware of that. But one of the ideas that we're going to be exploring is, as the switch cabinets need to be switched out, can we replace them with dead fronts, which would then allow us to be able to paint in the future? So that's what we're looking at. And then finally, that brings us to the long-term goals. There are two of these. That is the continued coordination with you all on city projects. So for example, the underground funds. Try to work with you to figure out how to best utilize those to maximize the potential and what's available with that, and particularly with your downtown revitalization program. And then also, we want to, again, look at our partners in energy and our renewable connect offerings. That's a big piece of what we'd like to bring forward for you. And then secondly, is kind of, I call it my George Jetson type of strategy, that is identifying smart technology pilot opportunities. So that could be anything from, you know, small cell attachments, which we've talked to you all about, partnering with other partners here in the Valley, such as REC, to see if we can bring that to fruition here. But it's also, you know, smart city design, if you have a developer that comes in and wants to offer something like that. And then electric vehicle charging stations. Are there going to be opportunities for that? And battery storage. I know, you know, the Valley has a ton of solar, but is there opportunity to bring in battery storage? I know that our Panasonic and Stapleton Airport project is coming to fruition, and it's a pilot, so the outpouring of that will be coming available here pretty soon. And it'd be great to see how we can plug it in to a community such as Alamosa. And finally, I know I just have a few seconds left, I want to tell you that in December of 2018, Excel Energy announced a overarching goal, not just for Colorado Excel Energy, but our whole eight-state grouping. And we have announced that we would like to be carbon-free by 2050. That is a really great goal, and it's far into the future. We're looking, you know, 30 years. So I think there's going to be some technologies that are not even available now, but we sent a message out to, you know, Wall Street and the investors and all those great minds to figure out how they can help us get there. And we love the idea of Alamosa being part of that in our future and helping us reach that goal while we help you all make yours too. So that's all I have for you this evening. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to see what I can answer.
Does anybody have any questions or comments? David?
Really, I think this is pretty ambitious goals.
Absolutely, yes.
And I appreciate that and the collaboration that you're willing to offer to Alamosa, so.
Yes, absolutely.
We'll see how many of these we can achieve, right?
Absolutely. And I hear all the time from my leadership, Alamosa's one of our absolute favorite cities. So we'll look forward to visiting with you all at CML too, further elaborating. Thank you.
I just want to say thank you, Ashley, for presenting.
You're welcome. And Ashley, thank you so much. I, it's been awesome to have you as a partner, and you are truly somebody who spearheads and really supports Alamosa, and we love the partnership, and it is an honor to be one of the pilot cities. And so thank you very much for all you do for us.
You're absolutely welcome. It's my pleasure. I love working with my cities. I love coming down here. Heather and her staff are just fabulous to work with, and it's a great opportunity for us as well, so thank you.
Thank you. So it looks like what we have is, does the council feel the Colorado Energy Future Collaboration 2018-2019 work plan is satisfactory?
Do you need a motion?
Yes, if I can get a motion.
Okay, I'll make your motion then.
We don't need a motion.
Oh, you don't need a motion, we're good?
No, yeah.
Okay, perfect.
It's in line with everything we formally took action.
So we're good?
Yep.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, is it all? Alright, thank you very much.
Alright, thank you very much. Our next point of business is business brought forward by city staff. So we have 1A, which is Public Works, and it looks like.
Yes, we will have Dan presenting on the three-mile annexation plan.
Thank you, Dan, I appreciate it.
Mayor Protam, Council, good evening. This is our annual update of the three-mile plan, and it's essentially the same plan as last year, except for a few minor edits on land use area one and land use area five to update the descriptions. And state law requires that we have to have a three-mile plan adopted before we can annex further lands to the city in the future. So staff's recommendation is to adopt the Resolution 7-2019 approving the three-mile, the 2019 update of the three-mile plan. Thank you. It's an annual update required by state law, yes.
I make a motion that we approve the update of the three-mile annexation plan, 7-2019.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. We'll go ahead and vote.
The motion carried unanimously.
Awesome. Thank you so much. Alright, so now we go on to police. And the first one is the first reading ordinance number eight, 2019.
Thank you, Mayor. There's a three, a triptych set of ordinances here relating to police issues that kind of got put onto the front burner by my experience with coming on to the prosecutor role. We've got a new judge, and we're taking a look at some of our ordinances. This first one is to add a provision to our ordinance on resisting arrest that would make clear that fleeing from an officer who is attempting to make an arrest constitutes an offense of resisting arrest under the ordinance. As it's currently written, it requires that there be some use of force or violence or threat of use of force or violence in order to constitute resisting arrest. The language that you see in this proposed ordinance is similar to language that has been adopted by other municipalities to capture that element of fleeing as part of resisting arrest. So that's what this ordinance does.
Does anybody have any questions?
I read through it today, and it was pretty straightforward.
Alright.
Yes, my theory is these are all fairly straightforward, but we'll see whether my theory plays out.
Why didn't we need this again?
Because the way our ordinance on resisting arrest is currently structured, in order to be found guilty of resisting arrest, you have to have employed or threatened to employ violence or force in the interaction, rather than simply running away when an officer says you're under arrest.
I'd entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we set this over for public hearing.
On April 3, 2019, or soon thereafter?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll second.
Awesome.
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you. Alright, I think we're on to the next one, Eric.
Yes, so the second member of the triptych is ordinance number nine, 2019, which will add a new provision. This didn't come up, but in, as part of reviewing our code to come up with what we might be missing that is similarly reflected in either other municipalities or in state code, we don't have an ordinance that addresses interfering with the use of public property. For instance, we don't, we have like a, maybe a harassment ordinance or something we could make work, but a protest staged in front of City Hall that made it impossible for people to come in and attend the meeting, we don't have an ordinance that specifically addresses that, whereas state statute does. And so you would not, our police force would not be able to write that specific kind of violation into municipal court, they would have to write it into county court under the state statute. So this adds a provision to our municipal code that mirrors that state statute code and allows that matter to be brought into municipal court.
And that would mean that they were hindering people from coming in or just, in general, harassing people or just general protesting outside of City Hall?
Well, so what it says is, "No person shall conduct him or herself in, at, or in any public building," blah, 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 "so as to willfully deny to any public official, public employee, or invitee on such premises the lawful rights of such invitee to enter, to use, or to leave the building." That's the main provision, then there's other subsections about impeding people in the lawful, impeding officials, which would be you or staff, in the lawful performance of their duties and that kind of thing.
I make a motion that we approve ordinance nine, 2019, on first reading, in Senate for public hearing, on April 3, 2019.
The motion carried unanimously.
Alright, and number three?
Thank you, Mayor. The last in this group is ordinance number 10, 2019, and this is to add what are called in "cohort offenses" into the city code. The most obvious one is attempt to shoplift, for instance. In fact, that's what the genesis of this particular ordinance was. We had a situation where someone was written up on a shoplifting charge but had actually made it close to trying to leave the store and then saw a cop in the store and just sort of randomly took stuff back out and put it back. It was pretty clear that the person, if she hadn't seen the cop, would have proceeded to shoplift, but we don't have an attempt ordinance, and again, once again, state statute does. So this is an ordinance that brings in both attempt, complicity, which is where you participate as a participant in a criminal scheme but may not be the actual person who does the criminal act itself, but you've participated in it. And then corporate liability. We had this come up, you may recall, in the context of the railroad, and the railroad received a ticket for a nuisance violation because they wouldn't do anything about their weeds. And Judge Powell at the time had question about whether we could even cite the railroad. It's this, I don't recall whether he threw that case out or whether it went through, but in any event, this ordinance would clarify that, again, mirroring state statutes to say that, yes, there is corporate liability for violation of an ordinance. There's obviously no jail time, you can't throw a corporation in jail, but you can hit it with ordinance violation fines. And if you can identify a specific individual within that corporation who was causing the corporation to create the liability, or commit the offense, then we can hold that individual responsible for the corporate action. So again, that also mirrors state statute and fills a hole that we have in our current code.
Counselor Vehill?
I think it's pretty clear for me. I move that we approve ordinance number 10-2019 on first reading, in Senate for a public hearing on April 3, or soon thereafter.
I'll second that.
Alright, we're ready to vote.
The motion carried unanimously.
Mayor, if I may, real quick, just so you all know, I'm looking at my phone. Ms. Daniel is texting me her votes and that, so if I get caught up on something, you guys know what's up.
I actually appreciate you doing it, because I know I'm usually the one who does it, and that would have been a lot for me to handle today, so thank you. Alright, we're going to move on to Parkson Recreation, and so the next one is Resolution number six, 2019.
Thank you, Mayor Protam. This is in line with the direction council had already given when we applied to GOCO for the funding for the Alamosa Riparian Park, also known, are you going to?
I can't, why?
Oh, okay. Also known as the Chefess Property. It is about 170 acres of narrow-leafed cottonwood, riverside woodlands that provides habitat for rare species and excellent low-impact recreational opportunities. Also, there's about a mile to a mile and a half of riverfront trail and three or so miles of social trails within the property. So the intent of this was to do a conservation easement, which is a requirement of GOCO, and Western Rivers' requirement as well. And we were able to make this possible through the leadership of Western Rivers and all the partners who came together to make this a reality. And I'm going to bring up that budget real fast because it really highlights, so GOCO's grant was $695,000. The city of Alamosa contributed $20,000. Alamosa County contributed $20,000. The Lora Foundation contributed $200,000. Gates Foundation, $75,000. And then private sources, several of our local businesses contributed towards that, and they are listed as the El Primar Foundation, the Trenchera Blanca Foundation, SLV Federal Bank, and SLV Health. So it's just an amazing partnership, and this is just to finalize that with the grant or the contract with GOCO.
Heather, would our city staff, our Parks and Recs, be in charge of the upkeep back there?
Yes.
Not the county or anything?
Correct. It's, so right now, we are leasing it from Western Rivers. Once everything's done, as far as there needs to be an appraisal and certain, the easement needs to be in place, then they will deed it over to the city. So it will be city-owned property.
Great, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Any other comments?
No, I was actually going to make a motion that we adopt the attached Resolution six-2019 as presented. I'll second.
I have a motion, a second. I would just like to add before we vote that this is a great partnership, and it's these type of partnerships that truly make Alamosa as great as it is, and so it's an awesome job, and thank you. And we can go ahead and start voting here in a minute.
The motion carried unanimously.
Alright, we have the second thing on the agenda under Parks and Recreation, and this is a motion to authorize the city manager to sign a letter of engagement with Colorado
Mayor, that would be me. Oh, I know what my problem is, I got to drag my screen back over again. Yeah, hang on. Okay, let me grab this. We have new technology here. We got real computers at our desks, and so, there we go. And so now I have to get used to how to use it. Okay. Heather reminds me that I assured IT that I was able to manage this. Relating to the item that you just approved, once the city takes title to the Riparian Park, one of the conditions of the GOCO grant is that it has to have a conservation easement placed upon it so that its character as open space recreation area will be maintained in perpetuity. And in order to do that, we need to have a conservation easement partner who will hold the easement, who will essentially be the beneficiary of the agreements that the city makes in granting the easement to maintain the property in that way. And the city looked to two potential easement holders to do that, Colorado Open, excuse me, Colorado Open Lands and the Rio Grande Headwaters Land Trust, and we staff held interviews with both of those entities, and were impressed, actually, by both entities who are and we were impressed, actually, by both entities who are very active, both of them very active in the valley in terms of both holding and creating and acquiring conservation easements and preserving a lot of the open space character that really makes the valley beautiful. And so we were fortunate to be able to have very good options to choose from. The staff's recommendation is that we go with Colorado Open Lands, and in part because they have more familiarity with public entity-related easements across the state. And we, we feel, hope, and expect that we can get some good guidance from them in terms of our actual project of managing the easement and the property going forward. And I will note that Judy Lopez with Colorado Open Lands is here in the audience if you had questions of her or wanted to get any further information from them. But that's, that's the recommendation, is that we go with Colorado Open Lands. We develop the, we don't have the terms of the easement developed yet. We need to figure out who we are working with and then work with them further to get the easement put in place.
Counsel Vi-Hill?
Thank you, Mayor. Eric or Heather, this is just for the Alamosa Riparian Park, yes?
Correct. We are still looking, we're going to make our 2019 payment on the ranch so we can unencumber a bigger part and then have some serious discussions about the conservation easement for the ranch. But this, this before you tonight is only for the Riparian Park.
Thank you.
Counsel Carson?
I'll make the motion to authorize the city manager to sign a letter of engagement with Colorado Open Lands.
Counsel Royles, do you have a question?
Yeah, I should say, what's the amount of the conservation easement?
This is a, it's, it's the whole entire acreage, if that was your question, but in, if there's a...
Is that a value assessment?
No. So this is as part of the grant that GOCO is giving us to acquire the property. We have to put a conservation easement on the property, so we would not acquire the property without a conservation easement. So in that sense, the value of it is baked in, because it comes to us essentially requiring a conservation easement be placed on it since the acquisition funds for the property itself come from great outdoors Colorado.
So you're not, so the city's not going to get any money?
Correct.
For the conservation easement?
Correct. The city doesn't own the property now. The city's not spending any, well, the $20,000 is part of the project, but the city is not spending any money on the property and does not currently own it.
But when you do own it, then it'll come with the conservation easement?
One of the conditions of acquiring it is that it will have a conservation easement placed on it.
There's conservation easement is, I don't want to necessarily say different, but the, as Eric explained, the background with it from a GOCO perspective and all of that is different than when we were talking to the others for a conservation easement that had money come with it. That's a different situation. This, in fact, there's some payments that Western Rivers will have to make to Colorado Open Lands in regards to get some of the conservation easement in place. So it's a different situation.
So we have a motion?
Second.
All right, let's start voting, give me a sec.
The motion carried unanimously.
All right. This is exciting, so it's awesome. And again, just that idea of having all of these partners together to work together, this is great. All right, we're going to move on to fire. And I see our chief is walking up to the podium. And this will be our first reading, reading for ordinance number 7-2019.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Before you tonight is an ordinance approving two intergovernmental agreements between the Colorado Department of Public Safety or State Patrol for dispatching services for both police department and fire department. They've been doing a dispatching for several years. Our agreements with them are five-year terms. The last one was done by ordinance in 2014, so it's expiring this year. So this is just basically a renewal of the five-year agreement.
Are there any questions? Counsel Vi-Hill?
Pretty cut and dry. I move that we approve the ordinance entering the intergovernmental agreement between the, with the State Patrol on first reading and set for public hearing on April 3rd or soon thereafter.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion and a second, we can start voting.
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, we're moving on to city manager and legal. So the first one is the public hearing and second reading of ordinance number 5-2019.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. This is an ordinance that is amending in part the established pay plan, and I'll cover the four areas. But then it's also indicating that if we have changes in the future towards the pay plan, we can do it through a resolution, which is more similar to our budget adjustments or amendments by resolution as well. The four changes that are before you tonight, two of them are very much just housekeeping, and then two of them are not. The two housekeeping items is the account clerk, too, was mistakenly listed in grade nine. It's supposed to be in grade eight. This doesn't impact anybody's pay or anything. It really was just a typo. And the other item is the ICE monitor was mistakenly listed in grade six when it should have been listed in the non-regular part-time area. And again, this does not impact the pay. It was, it was a typo. The two that are not housekeeping, the first one is the Economic Development Director. We have added that to grade 12 per council direction. And we have created a position for the Administrative Assistant in the city manager's office, which was previously at a grade five with the addition of the duties for the city prosecutor. We have named it now the Administrative Legal Assistant, and it would actually grade out to a grade eight from its responsibilities.
All right, I'll open this up now to a public hearing. And it's looking like nobody has anything to add, so bring it back to council. Any comments?
Yeah, real quick, just a thank you to Heather and staff for listening to. I know Mr. Carson and I really were big on the Economic Development Director coming in at what would be grade 12, so appreciate that.
Okay, anything else?
Mayor, I move that we approve ordinance number 5-2019.
I'll second that.
All right, let's go ahead and start voting. There we go.
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you. Our second is a public hearing and second reading on ordinance number 6-2019.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. This ordinance is to just align us with the state limit. We originally set the limit to $50 to mirror what the state allows for a gift. Throughout time, the state has increased it slightly, $53, then $59. And we didn't feel it was really worth the effort, but now they've increased it up to 65. So we feel going from 50 to 65 might be worth the effort to go ahead and modify ours and just align it with the state limit.
All right, I'll open this up now for a public hearing. If anybody has any comments, they can come up to the podium. And with that, I think we'll close the public hearing. Bring it back to council, any comments?
If there's no comments, Mayor, I move that we approve number, ordinance number 6-2019.
I'll second.
All right, we're ready to start voting.
The motion carried unanimously.
All right, moving right along. So now we have the third part under city manager and legal, and this is the selection of art for purchase.
So I feel like this is the funnest thing on the agenda tonight. When we created the ArtScape program, one of the goals that council had was every year to try to purchase one piece. And so there's a benefit to that, because as we try to establish our program and get artists interested in it, the more we can show that there's a chance their piece might sell, the more likely we are to attract artists. But then also, we want to grow our inventory. And so even though we do 15 pieces of art on loan, when you see them spread throughout town, it's not as much as what you're thinking. So we really, every year, kind of want to grow that. So this is the second time around for this recommendation. And what we've done in the past is we do share of council what the people's choice is. That first, the people's choice for this year was the Wings of Freedom, which is valued at $12,000. It's near the Ruby Slipper, and it's, it's a really great piece. And then we also have the Art Committee vote, just in case it's something different that they'd like to recommend to council. And then obviously, it's council's prerogative, what you would want to do. The Art Committee voted, and I'm really excited about what their recommendation is, that instead of purchasing one piece, their recommendation is to purchase three smaller pieces. The first two are by Amias Mestis and its old goat, and Longhorn. For me, I think it's just a neat story, because Amias, I don't know if he's still 13 or if he turned 14 now, or... But he's this young artist here locally, and it's just amazing to interact with him. He's just such a neat young man. But we also know for the Mestises, they recently had the fire. And so that family, all artists have been hit really, really hard. And so I think the timing of this request also is very touching to, to look at his two pieces. And then the third piece is by Kasha, and that's the feather that's in front of the Treasured Alley. So she's also a local. And both the Mestis family and Kasha have been actually on the Art Committee since the very beginning to kind of build this up. So if we reduce those pieces by the 20% commission we don't need to pay ourselves, the cost for each piece and would be, for all of them added together, would be $12,160. Since writing this, we have received word that we did get the grant through DOLA of $5,000 that we can use to offset this cost. And so the total cost would be $12,160 minus $5,000. We do have $16,000 remaining in the 2018 budget, so we are below that amount. We don't recommend using all of that, because with us buying three pieces, we, there's a likelihood we need to buy a few more pedestals and, and those types of things as well. So we didn't necessarily want to spend all of that.
If we buy these, do they remain in their spots?
So what you did last time is we, is the direction was we want it to stay in the downtown, but that the Art Committee could pick the kind of final location for it. And so my recommendation would be to do the same thing, that we keep it downtown, but that if the Art Committee feels there's a better final spot for that, that they could identify it.
Because last year, we bought...
El Pastor.
El Pastor, right? And that's still in that same location?
No, they moved it in front of the depot. So that was not the original location where it was. But in front of the depot is their, it's final location.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
I'm just curious about some. Are we supposed to be looking at both of them, or which brochure are we looking at?
It's the 2018 art brochure.
So one, we're going to pick three of those.
The, the recommendation is to pick that...
Yeah, we're picking, the recommendation is to pick three, two of which are in the 2018, and one of them is the 2017, because we still had Amias' piece from 2017.
That's, that's the one I was missing.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, the Longhorn.
Yep, the Longhorn is in 2017, and then Old Goat and Troveo, I don't know how to pronounce it.
Well, I like the, the recommendation from the committee, because El Pastor is the shepherd, and now if we add a goat and a Longhorn, it kind of, there's a theme there. It would be kind of, my two cents would be, let's kind of put them in the depot area. As people come off the train or that, they can see that stuff. One, one piece I did like that I would maybe offer is the Sand Hill Crane, number 15, just because it's March and the, and the cranes are coming back up, and they're stopping here in the valley. I don't know if we can add that to it, or maybe substitute something else for it?
They've been purchased.
Oh, they've been purchased?
Yes, because I, I like them too, but they've been purchased, and they're very reasonably priced. I think they're going to go out to SLV Health.
Cool.
So...
Well, that's great news, though, that another piece of art getting sold, so that's awesome.
The Deciduous, did that get purchased as well?
No, that has not been purchased.
And you know, I was just thinking, Counsel Vi-Hill is then, obviously, if they're the ones who bought it, we still get to keep, in a way, have those still here, so they're not going elsewhere. I think this, personally, I think this is a great suggestion, and I do think the timeliness of, of having these pieces of art, and then they're making it, they're going to now have a, something that's permanent here forever from local people, and I just think that's awesome, so. All right.
So I move that we, the city purchases Old Goat, Longhorn, and Troveo at the price of $12,160 bucks.
I'll second that.
Minus the $5,000 grant, right?
Well, we get reimbursed, so yes.
All right, you seconded. All right, we can start voting.
The motion carried unanimously.
All right, so now we're moving on to committee reports. Do I have any committee reports? Looks like Counsel Vi-Hill?
Yep, went to a school board meeting last Monday. The, they, they're kind of, everybody's on spring break right now, so... But we're getting, everybody's getting ready for state standardized testing coming up in two or three weeks, SAT and PSAT, then at the middle, at the elementary levels. Also, they're doing things to retain teachers, especially first-year teachers. They're also setting up walkthroughs in each building, middle, high, and elementary with the building principals and the assistant superintendent. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
They also celebrated the state basketball run by the girls team. And they also celebrated the wrestling team, so...
That's awesome, thank you. Counsel Carson?
I went to the animal society meeting today and saw a presentation by the Dumb Friends League, the Dumb Friends League, and it's pretty positive. It looks like the, the regional animal shelter's moving forward. There's still a lot of work to be done, but there's a lot of people at the table, and it looks like it's going to come to fruition with the help of all the community partners. So it was a pretty good meeting, and we're actually having another community meeting tonight. And I did apologize again, Heather did, on our behalf, because nobody could make it from council. But it's, it's looking pretty positive. It looks like it will happen in the same area we spoke about before, so just told them that we'd support them in any way we could.
And it looks like Counsel Daniel?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. So I just wanted to say that Caring for Colorado Foundation came down last week and did some community interviews in three of our communities. They were in Bell North, they went to Caneos, and they had one in Alamosa, and really just did a community kind of forum about what the issues are in the community, talked about their strategic plan and how that's going to impact their funding cycle, and really tried to make some connections with some organizations that they hadn't heard from before, and really tried to bring the community together. And there were many different community partners at all of those, but there was a strong showing from the Alamosa ones, and I wanted to just share that with the council and, and the community. So it was neat to see everyone come out and share, you know, the needs and the thoughts about Alamosa with the Caring for Colorado Foundation.
Thank you. Appreciate it. I went to the marketing board, and we had over $113,000 in requests for funding, and we did fund $49,000 with the grant money. It was very tough, just similar to how we do here at City. It's those tough decisions, but very exciting to be able to fund different, different events and different activities that are going to go on in the next year. And then with my CML hat, I am going to CML meeting tomorrow, and it will be Sam Mamet's last meeting. And so we will do a farewell to him tomorrow as well. All right, with that, we'll move to staff announcements.
So there's a, I'll do my quick ones and then turn it over to Eric and Holly. There is a, I'm going to get this wrong, so maybe Counsel Daniel can, can get it correct, a CCJC conference next week, and I'm not... CCJC conference next week and I'm not sure what all of that stands for. It's criminal justice stuff, I believe. But our team here locally for lead is going to be a panel up at the conference to discuss lead and how we're doing and lessons learned and, and those types of things. So I think it's great for Alamosa to be represented at a state conference and to be talking about an area that honestly, it's only possible through the partnerships that we have and a lot of hard work by a lot of different partners. So that's exciting. The other thing I wanted to let you know is you've probably received the invitation from the city clerk to start the evaluation processes. And so it seems we always sleep in between and we forget what we do. So usually what we like to do is that it's three meetings. So the first meeting, you would meet with the staff person. They would review how they feel the year's gone. You can ask questions, those types of things. The staff person would leave. You guys can talk amongst yourselves, some of your initial thoughts. I think then you give a form or you, and, and in between the first meeting and the second meeting, you guys are supposed to fill out the form, which has the goals, the feedback, comments, rating, all of that stuff. The second meeting, you guys meet without the staff. So it's a chance to go over how all of that comes together, what comments should be included and not, all of that stuff. And then the third meeting is when that evaluation is presented to the staff person. So similar to previous years, we've tried to stagger that a little bit. So when you have your second one where that staff person's not involved, we have the first one for the other. So then you can finish with that and then do the part that you don't need a staff person for type of thing. So just a reminder, as you see those invitations, that's how it's supposed to work. So. And if you don't have any questions, I think Eric and Holly just have a quick JAG update.
We just got notification from DCJ, the Division of Criminal Justice on the JAG Grant. They sent a letter from, that was sent to them from Governor Polis's office in regards to our 2018 funds. So now those are getting held up again because the federal decided Colorado is not eligible for them. So they're working on that, but our 2018 funds are now like on the line again. So that is about $55,000 and those fund our diversion programs and help out with our community service hours for our, in our, our indigent defendants. So that's kind of where we're at with that. We should have 2017 funds still and then these are for the 2018 funds, which we would receive in 2020.
Why isn't Colorado eligible?
Well, so according to the federal government, Colorado is not eligible because Colorado refuses to certify that it will cooperate in various ways with immigration and customs officials. And Colorado has now sued the federal government in federal court saying that the, the legisla-, sorry, the executive branch, which is where this direction is coming from, does not have the authority to withhold funds that have been appropriated by the legislative branch. So that suit is not unique and others, other lawsuits along those lines have been brought and the federal government has lost those lawsuits. So Colorado is fairly confident that it will prevail in this lawsuit, but that's, that's part of the governmental dysfunction that we have going on.
That answer?
Anybody wants, I can send them a copy of the complaint. It's interesting reading.
All right. And was that it, Holly? Thank you. And then did you have anything as well, Eric?
That's it.
Okay. All right. Well, we're moving right along. So now we're going into the section of the Local Liquor Licensing Authority. So as a reminder for us as council, we're now changing our hat and our hat now is not as city council, but as the Local Liquor Licensing Authority. And so what we'll do is have a needs and desires hearing on the application of Seeger Holdings LLC, DBA Locavores. Is that you, Eric?
Yes. So I just, I, I see the representatives from Locavores are here and the structure of the hearing is that they will present information to council to indicate the needs and the desires of the neighborhood for a liquor license at the Locavores' location. It's a public hearing and so the structure typically is that the applicant will go first and then we'll entertain any comments or, or statements from anyone as part of the public hearing. And I'm just looking in the public and I don't see anybody there but the applicant. So I'm presuming that there won't be anybody else to speak. And with that, the applicant bears the burden to demonstrate that the, the liquor license would fill a need and desire of the neighborhood. And typically that's done through presentation of petitions that have been signed. I don't know what the applicant plans to do. We'll just turn it over to them.
So we'll invite you up and introduce yourselves and let us know what your thoughts are.
Thank you for allowing us to come speak this evening. I'm Wendy Seeger and I guess I'm considered the CEO of Locavores or Seeger Holdings and my husband Matt Seeger, our CFO and handyman, I guess. So we're new to the liquor licensing thing. So we don't really exactly know exactly what we're doing. We're learning. We've kind of put this off for quite a while because it seemed so cumbersome. So it sounds like we've neglected one document for the state. We still have to get to the state. But I did want to give you a little bit of background on Locavores. Locavores opened September 5th, 2016 and in the two and a half years since opening, we've had steady growth. We have found a niche in the Alamosa restaurant community to provide quality from scratch food served fast, which is a healthy alternative to other highly processed food options. Locavores positioning as a fast casual restaurant could be compared to other well-known fast casual chains such as Chipotle or Qdoba. In the fast casual segment, alcoholic beverages are provided as a complement to a fast quality meal. In summer 2018, we noticed a large uptick in the number of, the volume of phone calls we received from travelers asking whether we carried alcoholic beverages. Providing beverages to patrons was an initial consideration upon opening, but was not pursued in an effort to focus primarily on our core business operations. Over time, we have sought to refine and improve these business operations and we feel that our business is now on solid footing where we want to take on something that's new and different for us and add this additional offering. Adding alcoholic beverages will allow for growth in the dinner hour offerings. We really, our largest business is our lunch business. And so we just have steady kind of trickle flow that increases dramatically in the summer, but still not quite our, our lunch business. In addition, it will be a nice compliment. We have a great patio that we've developed that my mother-in-law puts flowers on and it's really a nice space that we could have other events in the summer, sort of local musicians playing out on the patio. It, right now without alcohol, it really limits what we can do in our evening hours. So that's really, do you want to have anything to add? I talk for the two of us. So, so we, we just feel that we are at a place that we're ready to grow our business. Being able to serve alcohol is a, is an important piece to be able to do that. We plan to just really start with bottled drinks. We're in talks with several of the local brewers to feature them as well as other, maybe Colorado-based brews. In addition to some of the standard, my husband grows barley for Coors, so we, of course, we have to carry Coors. And then single-serve wine. We get a lot of requests for that in the summer. That's really what our plan is right now.
Can I interrupt for one sec?
Yes.
We're having technical difficulties up here and all of our computers are off and it's asking for a password, so we're not able to pull up the information. Sorry, I just-
Oh, you're fine.
I think Council V-Hill is the only one who has information he can look at. Sorry.
Yeah, that's what she was saying. Yeah. It's currently set for two delegates. We checked it, but something's going on. That should be coming on.
So I just turned, I've been making-
Okay. We'll see. Holly, I'm searching, we don't see it coming. Did she get yours up?
So let me ask this while we're working on this. I know I read mine ahead of time. Do you feel like you need to look at some of the findings and stuff?
No, I have my question.
Do you have your questions? All right.
Okay.
Okay. So, and Council V-Hill, do you feel the same way?
I'm good.
Okay. So we're, do you think we're good to continue while they're working on our computers?
Yes.
Okay. So with that being said, Wendy and Matt?
So we, we discovered a few things, so they're just having a brief conversation.
Okay, perfect. Okay. Thank you. So we're, it's not us holding it up right now?
No.
All right, then we're good.
We're multitasking during this time.
I will note that this is the second time I've had a meeting and weird things have happened to the computers or the system. I'm thinking I might be the jinx. Right?
It looks like we might have taken a power hit that we sent everybody to work.
Okay.
So what we're going to try to do is Eric can put the materials up there. So if we can't get your screens to work, we can always, it's working? Okay.
Okay.
Is that what I'm seeing?
Yep, I think we're good.
Okay.
So, you want to continue?
Well, I, I don't know whether the applicant was done where, when we got interrupted to try to solve some IT issues.
Possibly we were done, but we'll just proceed and see where, kind of lost our train of thought, but.
I apologize.
No, you're, you're fine. I guess we were visiting with Holly during the break and she informed us that we didn't indicate that there is a patio, but I, I, we have the tables out there. So she's saying that that's not enough indication for the state. We, we would have to indicate, I guess, that that is a patio that people would be sitting on. And she thinks we may be able to handle that administratively with our state application, but we'll have to see. So we may have to come back to you at a later date. We don't know for sure. So the drawing they turned in, the bold outline is what they're requesting to be licensed. If they want the patio to be licensed, they have to get that outlined in bold. So what I let them know is we can try and talk to the state and get it modified before they approve their application. Right now it's with the state because they did a concurrent review, but the state hasn't finalized it because they do need a few more documents from them. So we can try and get that modification in before they finalize that application.
Okay. So the idea then, let's continue to proceed?
I think that's, it's up to the applicant. So they can, it's, it's their decision how they want to move this forward and, and whether they want to proceed here or continue this until they see what they can do with the state.
I think if we can proceed here, we would like to.
Okay. Did you have anything else to add?
He's whispering things in my ear. Would you like to speak, Mr. Seeger?
Sure. We apologize for not having a petition. I, we missed that part of the directions, apparently. We feel that we are benefiting the community. We get a lot of tourists in our facility. We tell them about all the crops. We tell them about cranes. We are spokesman for the San Luis Valley. And I, I think that's a, and helping our business grow with more customers through alcohol would benefit that as well. Thank you.
Let, let me just ask you guys, you don't have to have a petition. What you do have to do is demonstrate to council that the needs and desires of the neighborhood would support having a liquor license at this facility. Not necessarily that your business would be benefited by such a license, but that the community needs would, would be served by having a license. And you address that to some extent, I think, by indicating that since 2015, you've had inquiries about provision of alcohol. So could you provide council with some indication of how frequently those inquiries are, how many requests you get for, hey, you know, when are you guys going to be able to serve alcohol and things like that?
I would say last summer, we received a phone call probably every other day, towards evening especially, asking if we carry alcohol. We don't really receive those calls from local, locals because they know we don't already. So it's mainly people that are traveling through the area. I don't have any data for you and, you know, just in a real honest, we don't know for sure whether this is something that our patrons are going to support. I mean, it, any new endeavor, it's really a guess, but we feel in studying other business models that are like ours, that it's, it is in demand. There is research associated with fast casuals across the nation that alcohol is becoming more and more offered. I think Noodles and Company are also looking at that, probably going to start. And especially the craft brew market is something that people are wanting. You know, I, I don't have data. I just have qualitative research from phone calls to our store asking that from us. But I don't have anything definitive for you.
Okay. And Mr. Seeger, you brought over to the clerk, I think, the poster that had been up at, at the premises, is that right?
Yes, sir.
And when was that posted?
On the day it was made available.
Or maybe the clerk knows.
The day it was made available, whatever day that was, Holly.
It was posted on February 13th.
And it stayed up until today?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
So we'll take that into evidence as exhibit A. And then council, if you have any further questions.
So Council Broyles?
Yes, is this a new application?
A new application, Holly?
Yes.
So that brings the number of liquor establishments to 45?
If you approve this application, it would bring it up to-
If you approve this application, it would bring it up to forty-five. Within the city.
Yeah, I'm for one, you know, I think that we have too many liquor establishments in Alamosa. I guess my concern is, does it meet the distance requirement from the school?
Yeah, I'll let Holly address that. That was actually a question that we had to investigate, because it's close.
What was the answer?
It meets the distance requirements. It's further away than what is required.
All right, then I'd like to see that there is a need for this in the neighborhood. I don't think that was clearly established.
So. You're correct, I don't have any data for you. But I will say, it would be very disappointing if the Counsel didn't accept this request when there's all kinds of corporate brands in our neighborhood, such as Chili's and whatnot, that have liquor license. And then they, you know, locally owned business isn't allowed to have a liquor license. That would be very disappointing and doesn't really support the economic development mission that I know, that personally know that the Counsel is very invested in, when there's other corporately owned brands that are given liquor license in the community.
No, I understand. But I think in a community of this size, forty-five liquor establishments is too much, because we have five to six thousand youth, and you're close to a school. And I think that there's just too many liquor establishments in that area, and I don't think there's a need. That's until I'm shown otherwise.
Counsel Carson?
No, he was next, I had him turn it off by mistake, so.
To a lot of respect, I agree with David, I'm not a fan of alcohol personally, I don't like it, but I do agree with you in the respect that it is good for business. It does attract a crowd that you do not normally get. You will lose business in a lot of sense, because you don't have that. Barring the petition, which I think myself can go either way in most cases, I think that... I think you do deserve a shot at having a liquor license, based on some, a lot of what you've said here today. I do think there was some things that were missing from your presentation and the stuff you guys were supposed to bring. But again, if you're willing to take an administrative chance on them approving that the way it is, I don't know what that red tape is, but I'm not against this in this respect. I think we've given the same opportunity to other non-local entities. And I do agree with you in that respect.
Thank you. Daniel?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. So I just had a couple of questions. Hi Wendy, I know it's weird, I'm sorry. The, I think, so my question is, what is missing for the state? So I understand there's the administrative adding the patio. But would the, I guess maybe it's for Holly, would the things that are missing to go to the state, would that impact our local license? And then I have another question after that.
So our local license doesn't get approved unless the state approves their license? So we have to have a state license before we can give out a local license? The only thing they were missing from their application is an operating agreement. And the state, after they receive an application, they'll review it and let me know if anything's missing. And that was the only thing they were missing in a certificate of good standing, which is easily pulled up from the Secretary of State, which they do have. So as soon as they give me the operating agreement, I'll send it into the state. And then the state will determine if it's approved or not.
Holly, for clarity though, just real quick, and this is to your question, Christina, is if the state approves it as is, if we approved it tonight and went to the state and they approved it as is, it would only be approved for the in-bold area until that administrative part could be worked out? And is it possible that they could actually turn that part down and keep it to where it's only the in-bold part? I guess that was a two-part question.
So I've never had it happen where we modify the drawing during the application process. But if I talk to them, it's possible that they would take that drawing and license that if you guys approved it that way. If they don't, and they only approve it with what they have in the drawing right now, then if you guys approve this application tonight, then the state would approve their application. It would be for that building portion. And then if they want the patio, they'd have to come back and do a modification of premise. Which is another application process and a little bit more money.
And that was my only concern, is that we might have to go through a process.
We'll hold everything to get that done before... We wouldn't serve alcohol until we had it all completed at one time.
My suspicion is that the applicant would ask that your approval tonight be an approval of their amended, as they sit in front of you, petition to include the patio, that that was what we would call a Scrivener's error on the map, that they didn't clearly indicate that the patio was part of the service area, but they intend it to be. And that if you would approve it tonight, that they would probably ask that that be included.
Counsel Daniel?
Thank you. I just wanted to say I appreciated Counsel Broyles and Counsel Carson's comments. And I would be in agreement with them if this was a liquor store and not a restaurant. I think when we look at liquor outlet density in our communities and prevention and working with youth in our area, liquor stores have a different impact than restaurants, and bars for that matter, as a straight-up alcohol-serving establishment only. And so I do agree that fast, healthy service food, the kinds of restaurants that Ms. Seeger and her husband were talking about, are serving more alcohol, they are a part of this. I do wish that we had heard from our local community, I think that would have helped make this a little bit easier. But I do support having a local business, having a local, healthy business have this option for its patrons. And I would be in support of expanding the application, as Eric said about it being a Scrivener's error and including the patio in our discussions today. Thank you.
And then I also think that that idea of restaurants and giving the restaurants the support to make it so that they are viable. And obviously, restaurant business is tough, and every person coming in makes that huge difference. And I do agree with the idea that we have corporate restaurants that are serving alcohol. And the nice thing is, when we have local ones, not taking anything away from the corporate ones, but it is nice to keep some of that money within our community from an economic standpoint. And so that idea of at least giving them the same fair chance to succeed like the corporate organizations that are out there. And so for that reason, I do, I support this. One question I had, and something just to think about, is obviously, having restaurant background myself, is the idea of making sure to have some trainings or some policies for your staff, just so that, making sure that obviously people are of legal age, that type of stuff, before you're drinking. So I'm assuming you have some of that, you all have some of that put in place?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay. All right. I guess with that, is there any other comments from Counsel? With that, I'll open it up to a public, any public feedback or public hearing? Or am I too soon?
This is the public hearing, so it's been opened, but you can ask now whether there's anybody else who wants to speak on it, since the applicants have completed their presentation.
I guess that's what I meant, so thank you for correcting how I said that. And I see people running up to the... All right, with that, I'm assuming there's no more comments. So. Then is our next step then, to have a vote?
Well, so typically...
Oh, we're gonna make a suggestion.
Right, you would have a vote to direct... If you think the answer is clear-cut, you would have a vote to direct me to prepare written findings consistent with either grant or denial for your consideration at the next meeting. If it's not clear-cut, then typically you would direct me to present findings going both ways for your more detailed consideration at your next meeting.
Counsel V. Hill, I don't know if I really got your feeling on this.
I wish we would have had a petition from folks who go to your establishment. But I strongly agree with what you said. I think if you look at the local restaurant scene in Colorado, people want to go out to the sand dunes, they want to go fishing, they want to go hiking, they want to come home or come through town and stop off and have a fresh-made meal. People are wanting to go and eat at places that are, where they know their food is grown locally, they know it's fresh, they know it's, it comes from the local economy and it will help the local economy. And I think by having, serving alcohol at your establishment will greatly help your business. It'll help, it'll force people to stop and eat at your place. And the more money we can get here in town, especially from visitors, the better, so. Again, I wish we would have had some signatures on that, but for me, I think you... And then you talked about the corporate, I mean, I'm thinking of the, I know our definition of the neighborhood is the city, is the town, plus a mile, right? Eric? Okay. But if I look at the part of town where you're at, you've got Subway, they don't serve alcohol there, McDonald's, Long John Silver's and that, they don't serve alcohol, the nearest place you can get alcohol is...
Would be Chili's.
Chili's. How about the bowling alley? They do, but they're never open, so. Oh, weekends too, weekends is a bar though. And I do hope that you all, as Ms. Hensley said, hit it hard with the education of your workers about IDing people and that, so I'm good with it.
Counsel Broyles?
Well, I'm just saying, I think Counsel needs to be consistent. Our last new liquor license, the person brought a whole stack of petitions. And they went through a lot of effort and time to get those. And I don't know why we're allowing another applicant to come in with no petitions.
Can I respond to that, sir?
Can I finish my comment?
Oh, sorry, okay.
And we're allowing the person to come in with no petitions. And to me, I don't see a need for another liquor establishment area. And I disagree with some of the comments about economic development. You know, bad economic development's not good, so. I mean, it's the same thing with having, you know, if liquor's so good, let's open up ten liquor stores and liquor establishments and bring all kinds of people in. I think it is a compliment to food. But again, I think we need to be consistent. And I don't see the need, because there's been no petitions. And why let one applicant shortcut the system and not go through the effort? And other applicants, we require a lot of documentation. So that's my comment, so you can come back.
Well, had I known that this would have been a point of contention, we would have had tons of signatures. When we were communicating, again, this is our first license, when we were communicating about the application, it was sort of just a, you can do that, it's not all that important. That's at least the message, we may misinterpret that, and it very well could have been. But if I would have known that it was a, something that you really wanted to see, that would have been here, that's how I run my business. We just had our health inspection yesterday. We received incredible feedback from the health inspector. We take our business very serious and have worked really hard at this. So this isn't just a willy-nilly idea. It was very mindful and just a process over time of evaluating whether it was the right thing for even our business being a healthy food model. So it was a lot of consideration and care has been taken into this. Thought, I hear your point of view. I'm not a person who drinks very much myself. I don't anticipate being a, you know, huge Friday night scene there. It's not really, doesn't go with our model. It's just a nice little beverage with a dinner. And in some of the other comments, just the corporate thing, I guess I'm thinking of Chili's, because on my way home, I drive past Chili's every evening. And, you know, they really have the night business on our end of town. And we have a great lunch business. And we know in order to have any competition with that, we would have to serve liquor. So I hear what you're saying, and sir, if I had known that that would have been a significant point of contention for you, you absolutely, I would have had that here for you.
All right, any other comments? So at this point, are we just...
I got a question.
I apologize.
Sorry, so...
You can close the public hearing and bring it back for discussion unless you have further questions of the applicant.
All right, let's go ahead and close the public hearing, and then now we'll do it for our own discussion.
Eric, can you, can we approve this or move this forward pending a submission of signatures or petitions?
No.
Can I say something to that effect to Counsel real quick? I wanted to make a comment to Dave's, just to clarify something.
Sure.
In reference to what you're looking at, Dave, I agree with you on consistency, I do. And I want to make a point to that effect. Our last applicant came in and had a stack of petitions, they did. They handed that to us and gave us no reasoning, gave us no personal reason as to why they needed a liquor license, how that would benefit the community. Paperwork-wise, they did what they had to, they did submit a petition. What I appreciate about these guys coming up is they were honest. They did say that, you know, they did cop to them not doing a petition. And they did have valid comments about the corporate issue. But to that effect, there was, there is consistency on our part in the fact that we aren't just judging this on a whim either. There is a balance that has to be met. The last applicant did not bring a personal point of view to that application at all. Here's a stack of papers, we did this, and that was it. They did appeal to us and they had some very clear points, and that was the reason that I wanted to clarify that for you, so you don't feel that there is an inconsistency in our approval of these applications. Because it isn't on a whim on my part for sure, and I don't think on anybody else's up here. So I just wanted to clarify that for you.
So in answer to your question, Counsel V. Hill, the answer would be no. But at the request of the applicant, certainly you could continue the... I was gonna say continue the public hearing, but I just had you close it. But anyway, you could, at the request of the applicant, could reopen it and then continue it to the next meeting to allow them to gather signatures if they wished. But that really is not something you can force them to do.
And it's not a requirement?
Right, there is no requirement that there be petitions presented. The requirement is that the applicant establish that the needs and desires of the neighborhood support a liquor outlet at that location and of that type.
Well, without a petition, how do you know that there's a need there?
Well, so that was some of the comments given by Ms. Seeger relative to when they opened up, they got a number of inquiries about whether or not, whether or when, I guess I should say, they would be serving alcohol. And then they regularly get calls throughout the summer about whether they will be serving alcohol. And I think you have to, she did point out that those tend to be from people who are not residents of the neighborhood, not local, because locals know that they don't serve alcohol, so they're not calling to inquire. But you would have to extrapolate then that some percentage of local residents would also appreciate having that. And she also cited national data that shows that. So that's your, that's your support, and it is there. I see your point and Counsel Carson's point and everyone's point that it's a lot easier to do if you've got a hundred signatures on a petition, because there's some evidence about what the needs of the locality are. But there is no requirement that that's how you show it. And I think that the applicant has presented sufficient evidence to show that.
So...
Not incontrovertible, I'm not saying you have to vote yes. I'm just saying that if you vote yes, there is support in the record for doing that.
And I also think that not having, or having no people here to be against it also is, I guess, another positive thing in the sense. So Eric, my question to you is, do you look to us for nods, or do we tell you our feelings?
No, you would need to have a motion to direct me to prepare either a set of written findings approving or a set of written findings denying, or both sets for your subsequent consideration and approval at your next council meeting.
All right, so Counsel... Okay, so we have a motion for both sets?
Yes, I make the motion for both sets.
Do I have a second?
I didn't, I get, I'm confused.
So we can do a motion for...
Let me just back up a little bit, because, so about, I'd say about a year, let me back up even further. In the past, I would prepare a, two sets of written findings. Because when you act on a liquor application, you have to do so by written findings. And obviously, you can't do that the night of. So in the past, I would present two sets of written findings, one for grant and one for deny for your consideration at the next meeting, with what I thought were relevant pieces of evidence that were presented at the hearing. pieces of evidence that were presented at the hearing. And then about a year ago, you came to the realization that typically you all kind of felt that you were able to make your minds up at the hearing itself, and if you directed me to present only grant or only deny, whichever way you made your minds up, then the applicant wouldn't have to sit on tenderhooks until the next meeting to know which way you're going. They would just know that I was preparing written findings consistent with the decision that you had already made.
So I think where we're at is we want a motion to have both prepared, or just one or the other prepared. That's what we're looking for.
Well, your motion on the table is to have both prepared, and there was no second yet.
Right.
And then there was the question to me, so that's where you sit. Looking for a second.
So we're still looking for a second? Is there a second? All right, I will entertain a different motion.
I move that Eric, you make findings of granting the application for our next meeting.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. Can we start voting, please?
The motion carried unanimously.
All righty, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So our next one is Consent Calendar B, and this is the San Luis Valley Arts and Entertainment Committee Summer Fest on the Rio Special Events Permit for June 7th through the 9th. Is that Eric?
I think if there's just a motion to approve Consent Calendar B.
I make a motion that we approve Consent Calendar B.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Awesome. If we could start voting?
The motion carried unanimously.
All right, and so now's the time for any council comments. Counsel Veahill?
Thank you. Yes, this is something that we brought up, well, that was brought up to us by the Hot Rod guys for the Early Iron Festival, and I'm wondering if we can kind of get on it a little bit now that things are warming up and we're getting close to the summertime. They were talking about fixing an entry, some cement or an entryway onto the park off of Second Street.
So I've talked to Ray, and he's aware of it, but then Harry will make a note of it, too. I'm not sure if it's been consistently warm enough for to do some of those materials, but last I knew, they were still aware of it, and we'll make sure, we'll mark it down.
And Counsel Broyles?
I've received a couple of comments from my ward about the possibility of at Carroll Park with that old ice rink, converting that to a pickleball court. They're claiming when they go to the rec center, the pickleball courts are all occupied, that we need to expand. So I bring that up for the City Recreation.
Okay, so we can share that with the rec board. It would be somewhat costly in that it's just dirt there right now, so it would require a pad and that kind of stuff, and we'd also need to check kind of what some of the previous possible plans were for that location as well, but we'll make a note.
And Counsel Carson?
I just wanted to make a comment on some calls that I got in regards to the Citizen Street Committee. I've gotten very positive comments, feedback on what we're doing with that, and I just wanted to thank you guys again for help with that, and, you know, cross our fingers that everything moves forward in a positive manner.
Thank you, and I just want to say from a staff perspective, we left that meeting. It was just an amazing meeting. You guys picked some amazing volunteers. They're very reflective of the diversity of Alamosa, but they're all very much engaged and passionate and rolling up their sleeves to work on this project, so it was a very positive experience.
Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
Just to add to that, because I want this tax to pass, because it's a good thing. If you look at CML, I think they put out an article just within the last week of how successful Colorado Springs and that program has been, and it's been so successful and people like it so much that they're probably going to do it again for another ten years or so. And then on the flip side, if you look at like the city of Durango, it didn't pass in November, I've told you this before, it didn't pass in November, and now they're struggling with where to find funds to fix their streets, so.
Thank you. Counsel Carson?
Yeah, and I'm sorry, along that same lines, I have gotten calls in regards to the Homeless Coalition as well, and it's, the feedback is very positive. I had a call from someone from another community, and they were really excited about it. They also wanted to get information from us to see, you know, kind of guidelines, but everything has been super positive, so I wanted to thank you guys on that, on that note as well.
And just a little bit of an update on that, we will have a resolution before council, I believe, at your next meeting with the recommendation from that small group on like different seats. Once you set the resolution that creates that group, then we can advertise for it, and then you guys can go through some interviews again to seat some people on that, so that is moving forward.
That's great news. And then Counsel Daniel?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. So just a couple of comments first. Thank you, Counsel Veahill, for helping me out tonight. I appreciate that a lot. The other thing really is, so what Heather mentioned, the Criminal Justice Conference, so it's the Colorado Collaborative Justice Conference, which I know doesn't sound very different, but it really is about all of the teams that work in the criminal justice arena that the lead program will be presenting at, and I do have to say, it's a pretty, they don't ask just anybody to be on those panels and to be speakers and to do those things, and so it's been kind of neat that the city was actually asked to present versus even presenting a proposal, and I think that just speaks a lot to what that lead program has done and the kind of effort that we've shown as a city in collaboration, and so I wanted to say thank you to that. I've also heard very positive feedback about the Streets Committee, as well as very positive feedback about the Homeless Coalition there. I actually was just stopped yesterday to have a conversation about where we were with them and what was going on, so I appreciate the forward movement. I let her know that the resolution would be coming soon, so she should be ready to look for that, but I think there's going to be many of our community members, as there were for the Streets Committee, that want to be a member of this and help us move this forward. So I just wanted to say I've been hearing really positive things about that, and I'm super excited about the presentation that will happen next week at that conference as well, so thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other comments? All right, with that, we do have a need to go into executive session pursuant to CRS 2464024B to receive advice from the city attorney and outside legal counsel concerning naming additional parties to the pending opioid litigation. With that, we will move into executive session. There will be no further decisions. After the executive session, all we will do afterwards is adjourn the meeting. Yeah, so can I have a motion? Sorry.
I so move.
I second that.
All right. And if we could start voting?
The motion carried unanimously.